Good evening and welcome to the November 8th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Just give me one second and we can start it up here as well.
This conference will now be recorded.
Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, can we stand for the flag? All right, so before I go any further, we have public comment, but even before I address that, I just want to let everyone know that there's a sign-up sheet at the front desk over there for anyone that wants to speak on tax classification. So if anyone who is interested can just go up, sign their name. So it'll go a little smoother, that would be appreciated because I'm going to be juggling it with everyone online tonight with this hybrid model, so we'll see how this goes. With that said, we have Darlene Foyle, Board of Health.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know, we have some clinics that we have been working hard on. We have flu clinics that are scheduled next Tuesday for the seniors. Senior Flu Clinic at the Auburn Senior Center on Tuesday, November 16th, from 8:30 to 11:00. And there's no appointment needed. This is always geared towards our seniors and we're hoping to have a good turnout. Additionally, we also have a Town of Auburn Employee Flu Clinic scheduled for this week, and that's this Wednesday, the 10th. And that's going to be in the afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. That'll be here at the Town Hall. Again, no appointment needed. And something that we are proud to let you know, we have been working with a community partnership for planning for COVID booster clinics. So that is in coordination with the Auburn Pharmacy. We will have a COVID booster clinic this Saturday, and that is going to be at the Senior Center from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At the Senior Center, an appointment is not needed. We will be offering both Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, and the eligibility requirements are right on the flyer, which we posted. If there's any questions regarding specific vaccine questions, those can be directed towards the Auburn Pharmacy, but we're very excited to be working with them. They've been wonderful to work with. So this Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 to 3:00, we are directing this clinic for our Auburn residents. And then there will be another clinic next Saturday, same time, and that will be open to all residents. But we appreciate the opportunity to let you know about these. Thank you.
We have no one else under public comment. Under public hearings and presentations, we have from Ford of Auburn, an application for a motor vehicle license, Class 1 and Class 2, as well as an auto repair license. That's at 780 Washington Street, Auburn. Is the applicant or a representative in person or on the call?
Yeah, I think there's three of us on the call. Yes.
Great. With that, is there a motion to open the hearing?
A motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Can you please state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about the application?
I'm Robert Kennedy. I'm the VP of Operational Accounting and work for Group One Automotive. We are buying the prime group of Auto Group, about 30 dealerships, I think about 20 of them in Massachusetts. And we hope to close on it, assuming we get all of our licenses next week.
Thank you. Members will find the application and close your packets as well as the letter from the DCG. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
A motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve licenses provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses are subject to all the conditions stated upon them, clear to comply with any, and all conditions shall invalidate said licenses and render them null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the licenses, and that the licenses will be for the remainder of 2021 and the 2022 year.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Rens, seconded by Mr. Bertheu, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to move up Agenda Items 6B and 6F?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Through the Chair, thank you very much for this opportunity. So Shannon Regan, our Economic Development Director, is going to present you on each of these items. One is the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant, final report that we just had, which was a grant that we received from the state. And then the next item that she also has a couple slides on is the Goddard Park Final Report through our Technical Assistance Grant with CMRPC and the results of that. So, perfect.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for talking to them.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm working on, I'm going to present to you on the Rapid Recovery Plan that we did with partnership with BSC Group, DHCD, and Housing and Economic Development. So I'm going to give you a brief overview first. So 125 communities were eligible to apply for this grant. They took advantage of it, all 125 communities. And this was basically a program set up to help assess the impacts of COVID-19 and develop action steps to rectify those issues that were identified. So we applied for this grant for the Route 12 and 20 corridor. We had to pick a section of town that would potentially feel the impacts the most. We thought this was a good area to save a mix of development, independent businesses, chains. And then we received $60,000 in technical assistance, and we were matched with BSC Group. In March of 2021, BSC Group, might sound familiar, they've helped us with a number of other planning initiatives and plans in town as well. And then each Rapid Recovery Plan was developed in three phases. Phase 1 was the diagnostic, Phase 2 was the project recommendations, and Phase 3 was the plan. So a little bit more about the study area. This area went from where CVS is basically, all the way down to... All the way down to J. Anthony's. So this area is comprised of 270,000 square feet of retail space, almost 22,000 square feet of office space, and eight out of the 57 stores were identified as vacant in April 2021. And there's about 101 businesses that operate in the study area. I can keep going? Yeah. Sure. So the process, a little bit more about the process and the phases. So Phase 1, we did a diagnostic. The diagnostic was comprised of a plan set forth by the state. We used their rubric that they developed. So some tools utilized. We did a site walk together with the SC Group. We walked the whole site, saw the facades, the different conditions, how it was to walk the area, how fast it was traveled, stuff like that. We did a business survey through all the businesses in the area, and those were sent by mail, email. BSC physically went to each business, and I made calls as well, just to make sure they received the survey. And then we did internal meetings with BSC and Town Administration, and we held a public meeting as well to get feedback. So Phase 2, during Phase 2, identified priorities that came out of the feedback that we received from the surveys. We also requested subject matter experts for specific requests. So some of those requests that we wanted to get a little bit more information about was signage regulation and design guidelines, and NS Associates was the subject matter experts for that. We did permitting pop-up activations, public art, branding, and coordinated marketing of the district. So with each subject matter expert, they wrote a rubric that helped identify action steps, and that was incorporated in the final report as well. And Phase 3 was the final report, so that was just submitted to the state. That was just submitted to the state. There's no approval needed through the state. The municipalities can do as they see fit with the plan, which is nice, it gives a little bit of freedom to local municipalities as well. So we had 12 businesses respond, which sounds like a low number, but it was actually well above the median that other municipalities have received, which was good. And thankfully, the businesses who we did talk to and submitted a survey, they were happy with the town's efforts in recent years for economic development. They felt supported through COVID overall, and we actually didn't have a lot of vacancies in the area, which was great. So some key findings that came out of the survey, the site walks, the subject matter experts. I broke them down in challenges and strengths. So some challenges, as we all know, it's a high-speed area of travel, so it can kind of lack identity in that area, just because it's more of just a pass-through, it's connected to large highways. Their area needs more of an identity to bring more people to the corridor and encourage them to stay longer. Always time and capacity to implement the recovery efforts. The final plan has quite a number of recommendations, and obviously, it's just the town and capacity to be able to put all those forward. And then another thing that was identified is there's few parks and open spaces in the area, and inadequate accommodations for bicyclists and visitors who would like to walk along the corridor. It's wonderful, we have actually two veteran parks within the study area. That was the main focus of trying to see how we can incorporate that more within the corridor and encourage more open space and visiting to those sections as well. So some of the strengths, it is accessible and well-traveled by car, which is good. So we do have a lot of people leasing the area. There's a good mix of businesses types in the area, between chains, small businesses. Overall, the business in the area, like I said, we're happy with the town's efforts in the past few years, and strong relationship with the business community, including the Auburn Chamber of Commerce as well. So we have a lot of hands that can play a role in trying to bring these recommendations to fruition. So these are the final recommendations that were suggested. And you can also find this plan on Auburn Guide as well, under Economic Development. It's about a 200-page plan, but it has a lot of good info in there as well. So the recommendations was establishing a rail trail for improved pedestrian connections in the district, increasing public art in the study area, calmer street pilots, zoning for pedestrian safety and comfort, update municipality's sign code, encourage outdoor dining, work on some branding and marketing for the area, develop and permit pop-up activations at a few key parcels in the area, establish a business recovery task force, and restaurant technical assistance and funding opportunities. So some of the recommendations will require pretty short-term efforts, where others would require multiple phases, a decent amount of grant funds, and manpower. So really, the next step, now that the plan has been finalized, the state has released a funding resource team application. So these applications are pretty brief, but they ask every municipality who participated in this process to identify two recommendations that they would like a little bit more information about, and identify grant funds that are available, action steps, et cetera. So what we did, and it's due December 17th, so what we're doing right now is trying to finalize those requests. One of them that we're thinking about is establishing a rail trail for improved pedestrian connections, and the other one is develop and permit pop-up activations. So a little bit about the rail trail request. So as you can see in the two photos, those are a couple photos, one behind Tinker Hill Road and the other near West Street, of the abandoned rail trail that I didn't even really know a lot about before this process. So what this would do is explore the feasibility of converting the existing abandoned rail trail to a multi-use trail along inactive commercial corridors. So this would encourage people within the district, whether they're employees, whether they're potential future residents of Albert Street and Blaker Street with the 300-plus unit housing development coming in online in the next few years. They can really take advantage of the open space that's really underutilized right now. Recreation also helps bring outside visitors to Auburn, hopefully help stick around the corridor, get something to eat afterwards, check out some of the small businesses in the area. Project timeline, this is one of the large, probably the biggest recommendation that came out of there. The project timeline is medium, around five to 10 years potentially. Budget, it's large, it's over $200,000, so obviously, this would be broken up into multiple phases of when and where we can secure grants. And it's a medium risk. We do have, the Water Department owns a certain portion, and so does EverSource, so there would have to be coordination on that regard. And then the second request was develop and permit pop-up activations. So a couple photos, just as examples. We started seeing a lot more pop-ups that were semi-permanent in storage containers or reused, like trucks or buses. It's kind of a neat way of businesses having less overhead, but still able to have a semi-permanent spot. So especially post-COVID, it helps people who might not have the funds to do a brick and mortar, but allows them to show their goods and services. So these parcels, there are a couple large parcels in the area that could be used for this, at least seasonally. These parcels could accommodate pop-up activations that would help draw new visitors to the area, increase current traffic to pull in and stop, and kind of check out the area as well on top of these pop-ups. So this is a relatively low cost. It's just really municipal staff participation, training, development, and then the cost is low. It really is just us learning how that would actually look, how we would permit such things, to make sure it's safe and equitable for everyone, and making those connections with the private businesses. Timeframe relatively short-term, and it's low-risk, it'd be voluntary for businesses to use in the area. So if they would like to activate a pop-up, we would basically have the process available for them to how to go about that. So I could take questions on that first, if you'd like, before I head into the hearing.
As far as the, you know, the pop-ups, is there going to be some sort of a tax schedule for that?
It's early on, so one of the requests, why we requested a little bit more from the experts, is to really see, because we have no really experience doing that in Auburn, so we would really have to finalize that with the experts to help us, where they actually saw this utilized in other municipalities and kind of mimic almost that process. So I'm not positive yet how that would look, but that would be something that we'd consider for sure.
Just great work, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And this goes, yeah, the rail trail, this goes second-hand with the Open Space Committee and the work we did, and we identified that in the priority as well, so multiple practices put together, some good stuff. Thank you.
I have a really brief report on the Goddard Park. So I know Adam and I had come to see, to show you guys the interactive survey a while back, a few months back, for the Goddard Park. The final plan did end up being published. It's online as well, under Auburn Guide, same area where the Local Rapid Recovery Grant is. So part of the process was internal meetings with Town Administration and CMRPC. We had a community survey, we had 211 responses, which was great. We had public meetings, and then flyers at various public spaces with QR codes to encourage people to take that survey and do impact analysis. So the recommendations that came out of this really matched with what we're currently really is going underway, and kind of expanded on that. So it was to explore opportunities for local businesses and organizations to sponsor events at the park, such as like flea truck festivals, art walks, things like that, chamber events. You might, guys might have seen the scarecrows from the chamber in Goddard Park in the library. That's their second year of doing this, so kind of encouraging more of those community events. Create an annual town-sponsored event, such as the tree lighting ceremony, concerts, displays, organized community plantings of rain or pollinator gardens, where everyone can kind of play a role. Library could have educational classes that coordinate with that. Apply for funds to refurbish the Polaris missile and fountain. Continue encouraging community participation for town-led cleanup days, which the chamber is typically great about doing. Because of COVID, we had to take a break for a couple of years, but just encouraging even other groups to just kind of maybe adopt the park a little bit, to help out. And then develop an open-air programming with the library, so the sailboats, remote control sailboats, educational programs, passive recreational opportunities as well with the new walking trail. So yes, that's pretty much what it came down to. It's about a five-page document, has a lot of the survey results, interactive pictures, so we were really happy. CMRPC did a great job. It was broken down in two phases, so yeah, we're looking forward to hopefully applying, using this to apply for future grants for the Goddard Park as well. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Can I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 6F?
So moved.
Second.
Question and potential vote on plastic bag extension. And I'll just say it now. For those that entered, there's a sign-in sheet right next to the podium there. If anyone wants to be heard on tax classification, we're asking everyone to sign their names so that we make sure we get everyone, since I'm doing this with a hybrid model, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to talk.
Good evening. So I wanted to bring to your attention the Plastic Bag Reduction Bylaw. As you know, we have been, we've implemented it, and we have been working with businesses throughout the past several months. And what we have noticed is there are at least some businesses that have asked about the bylaw and needing some more time, a little bit more leeway, in order to be able to use up their current stock. So having that understanding and knowing that we've spent a lot of time, and I know we've heard a lot of the board's comments, and also working with the business community, I presented, I kind of created something for you, and hopefully you have it in your packets. It's a Plastic Bag Reduction Extension Request Form. And what that is, is basically an opportunity, if a business is, has some existing stock, and they are using up their existing stock, this would allow them to officially be able to request an extension, you know, to be able to use their, use the bags that are not in compliance with the bylaw greater than four mils, and be able to have a formal process to at least say, I have this inventory, I'd like to have some time to be able to use that up. Obviously, we'd have to have an understanding of that they've already made attempts to purchase the bags, maybe there's a delay in the paper bags or alternate bags coming to them. I think everybody has heard on the news every night, delays about everything, and just shortages on a number of different goods. So this kind of falls in line with that. So this application is really, I think, kind of like a way to do that. And so I wanted to present it to you. Certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you're on a tight timeline tonight with several hearings, but at least this gives you a process to discuss, and possibly at the next meeting, we'd like to bring an actual request.
I don't see any reason why we can't. Very reasonable thing, and the form looks pretty thorough, so I think we should just get it in there.
Through the Chair, I'm in agreement. You ask people to document the fact that they, why they can't comply, and I think everything's very reasonable, you have it on record.
Is there any way to ask them to include, I didn't see it quickly, and I might have missed it, an invoice of any bags that they've already ordered? And I might have just missed that, looking at it quickly.
Oh, sure.
I did. Yep, please, okay, never mind, I take it back. Yeah. Well, so with that, if there are no other questions, oh, Mr. Governor?
I just thought of one. Is this going to be available as an electronic form or not?
You mean, like, somebody can apply for it online and then send it? Yeah, I'm sure we could do that with IT.
I just think that would be easier, especially, you know, this is something that the business is going to do when they have time, so it would be great if, you know, say, Simon's at the closing, they say, oh, you know, I got to do this, I can do this now, and not have to make a trip to Town Hall or fill out a form, go to the post office, things like that. That's the only thing that I would recommend is make it an online form.
Sure, that's a great suggestion, and I'm certain, we can certainly do this online, and I can work with IT to see if it is like a fillable form.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you so much for your help.
We still have two minutes before the classification hearing, so I'll just use this as a chance to say, give a description about how it's going to go. So this will be my first time sharing the tax classification hearing, so please have patience with me. We're going to take a vote, assuming it passes, to open the hearing at 7:00. Then we'll have our Town Assessor come up and give a presentation that'll be for everyone. And then after that, I'll turn things over to the Town Manager and Town CFO to see if there's anything that they'd like to add after the presentation. After that, I'll turn it over to Board Questions, Board Comments, and then open things up to the public. Once again, I just want to point out that there's a sheet over here that we asked you to sign on, so just to make it easier, to make sure everyone gets up to be able to make the comments that they want or questions that they'd like. After that, we'll have, we'll close the public portion, have board discussions, any additional comments or questions from the board members. Then we'll vote to close the public hearing, and then we'll actually take a vote on, or the four votes needed for tax classification. And that, I still think... Yeah, that'll take less than a minute. Can I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 5B?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. In your packets, we have two, thank you, donations, the amount of $410 to, from the Firefighters Association to the Auburn Fire Department. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the gratitude.
Motion has been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we also have $100 from Jeffrey Labonte to the Auburn Fire Department.
Motion to accept the gratitude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And with that, we're at 7:00. Can I have a motion to open the tax classification hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With that, I'll turn things over to our Town Assessor if the presentation is ready.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I just establish a framework? The presentation is going to address certain elements of what Town Meeting Action resulted in. And I'm going to turn the seat over to Seth when I'm done, so he can see the presentation and address the board at the same time. This presentation is built around an amended Fall Town Meeting Action on October 26th of roughly 74.25% of the state's revenue. on October 26th of roughly $74.2 million. As a result of that, and as a result of some modifications that were made to the revenue side, our final numbers being local receipts and, and excess new growth that we used to dilute the level of taxation. This presentation and the factors involved that Seth and Lisa have identified is going to result in a level of taxation of 1.15% out of a possible 2.5%. That means out of roughly 1.28 million, we're only taxing 561,000. Roughly 657,000 would be added to the excess levy, giving us just under 8 million, 7.9 million dollars. As we commonly show our town meeting members, over a 10-year period, we have to tax the 2.5%. And we save our taxpayers roughly in excess of $40 million over that period of time. So, we do have a balanced budget and I just wanted to establish that as a basis of any consideration you may give tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Seth.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me? There are extra copies of the presentation on the table right in front of you. If anybody needs an extra copy, this is the fiscal '22 tax classification. The calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated as of the time of this preparation. There may be additional information, informational slides included in the handouts that are not part of tonight's presentation. So, the purpose of the class, of the classification hearing is it allows a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total tax levy for the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the tax classification hearing doesn't do, it does not determine the tax rate for the town. It only determines the distribution. The classification does not determine how much money can be raised. The town meeting voters determine what the tax levy will be. Auburn's tax rate. The tax levy is determined by town meeting appropriations and expenditures, state and county charges. It is paid for by using town revenues, excise, fees, enterprise, and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, debt exclusions and overrides. The role of the assessor's department. Value property for the purpose of equitable taxation, administer abatements and exemptions, be a resource to the public, and explain the classification options to the selectmen. Overview of the revaluation process. Residential properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting value include style, condition, interior and exterior features and size. Commercial and industrial properties, values are based on income approach to value per Department of Revenue requirements. Personal property is net book value minus new depreciation. There are four votes at the classification hearing. The residential factor, it shifts the tax rate between residential and commercial properties, open space discount, it shifts the tax burden within the residential class to discount open space, the residential exemption, which shifts the burden within the residential classes, and the small commercial exemption, it shifts the burden within the commercial and industrial class to give a discount to qualifying properties. Percentage of levy for property classification, this is kind of a snapshot of fiscal 2008 versus fiscal 2021 of last year. You can see the percentages. Residential in 2021 was 74%, 2008 was 73%. The commercial in 2021 percentage is 15.64% and 2008 is 17.68%. And then there is personal property and industrial. The tax levy, the levy limit minus the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. So, it's last year's levy plus new growth plus 2.5%. The maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus debt exclusions and overrides. An excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the actual levy. The fiscal '22 levy limit calculations were determined as follows. The '21 levy limit was $48,736,792. The fiscal '22 2.5% allowable levy increase was 1.218 million. The fiscal '22 new growth was 769,613 and the fiscal '22 proposition 2.5 override was zero. So, the fiscal '22 levy limit was $50,724,825 and the fiscal '22 debt exclusion was $2,831,786 for a maximum allowable fiscal '22 levy of $53,556,611. Fiscal '22, what the factors drive the tax rate increases. Increases, increase in the excluded debt for the Auburn schools for the upcoming fiscal year. The debt exclusions, demolitions, properties going off the tax rolls due to demolition from snow damage, fire damage, or other causes. Properties becoming exempt, foreclosures by the town, purchases by exempt organizations. Fiscal '22 growth trends. Residential growth is up, most stable growth, not subject to being skewed by individual properties. Commercial growth is up. The numbers can be affected annually by a few significant properties, renovations, Mazda, Webster, Webster V, Central One. Industrial growth is moderate. Numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property or addition. This is the third year of moderate, moderate industrial growth. And personal property growth is moderate. Numbers are unpredictable. New growth from businesses in town has accounted for moderate increase this year. The new growth, kind of a four-year trend, as you can see the fiscal '22. Bear with me for a second. The fiscal '22 residential growth was 288,899 and the personal property growth was 277,829. Commercial was 165,772 and the industrial was 37,113. The residential growth is stable. Mary D. Stone Apartments, the condo complex development is getting near completion. It's just about completed now. Personal property sees stable growth. Commercial industrial growth are trending up this year primarily due to the Mazda completion, Webster V, and Central One. Newer projects are starting. Residential valuation percentage compared fiscal '21 to fiscal '22. If you look at fiscal '22, the overall, the overall residential rate as a whole is up 11.77%. Single family homes are up 11.85% in valuation. Condominiums 5.77%. Two and three families 12.99%. Vacant land is up 9.68% and apartments four and above are up 15.24%. Equalizing the fiscal '22 rate and value changes. So, the average single family house in fiscal '21 was $281,910, which amounted to a tax bill of $5,114 at the fiscal '21 tax rate of $18.14, the residential rate. The fiscal 2022 average single family home was $319,824. So, to arrive at the same tax bill as last year, the resulting tax rate would have to be $5.99 per thousand on the residential side. The overall residential value for most properties, single families and condos, was up 11.77%. Vote on the residential discounted rate. Up to, this is a vote, up to 20% discount to owner occupied residential properties. It shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher priced homes and non-resident homes. It works primarily in communities with large amounts of vacation homes or secondary homes or non-owner occupied properties. Vote on the small commercial exemption. The vote, the final vote for the board of selectmen is the commercial, is for the commercial exemption. No effect, this has no effect on the residential and personal property rates. The industrial properties do not qualify but share the tax burden for the exemption. The exemption goes to the property owner, not the business. It relies on the trickle down effect. It's a continuation of the small business exemption. It's for multi-business properties. All must qualify. So, if you had a strip mall that was classified as commercial and had three or four businesses, all businesses on that parcel must qualify. The value of the parcel must be less than a million dollars and each individual business that resides on that parcel must have ten, fewer than 10 employees. Assessors must go through a list of businesses from the Department of Workforce and Development every year to qualify each property. Businesses not listed must be DVAs to qualify by the assessor. Small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, all properties not on the list need to refile applications with the assessor's office. The small business exemption shifts the tax rate up to 10%. Annually, vote between properties occupied by qualifying small businesses onto the other commercial and industrial properties. Applications are taken after the tax classification hearing and processing, processing can delay setting the tax rate. Any exemptions not processed prior to submission of the recap will impact the overlay account. So, applying the small business exemption to Auburn, if you look at the left-hand column and that is a, a commercial valuation assessment, you have 250,500,750,999. If the property qualified for the exemption, the result, this is based on a $24 per thousand commercial tax rate. Taxes on the 250 property would be 5,400 with the exemption. Without the exemption would be 6,000, resulting in a $600 exemption granted to that particular parcel. And you can see it goes down in $600 increments depending on the valuation of the commercial property. And anything over a million dollars in value does not qualify. These are the historic CIP splits selected. You can see the fiscal year. So, it goes from 2009 down to 2021. These are the CIP growth trends as the factors have changed. So, again, the fiscal year is on the left-hand side and you can see the total new growth applied to the levy, levy limit. It's the second from left column. That's new growth. So, it's 769,613 in fiscal '22. And then it breaks it down to the residential growth in FY '22 is 288,899, which is about 42.5% of new growth. And the CIP new growth was 700, I mean, excuse me, 478,890, which represents about 57.5% of new growth in fiscal '22. This is a snapshot of some bordering communities and what it costs for them, the commercial businesses to, to conduct business in terms of real estate taxes. And these bar graphs are based on an, an assessment, a parcel being assessed at a million dollars for round numbers. As, if you look at the towns that are included, Grafton, Milbury, Oxford, Leicester, Sturbridge, Shrewsbury, Worcester, Auburn, Worcester and Auburn are the only ones that have split tax rates. All the other towns have single tax rates. The rate chart for fiscal '22 is as follow. If you look on the left-hand column, you'll see the CIP shift. In fiscal '21, we were at 1.15% and if it stayed the same, the resulting residential tax rate would be $16.82 and the, the commercial rate would be $20.54. And you can see as we shift higher or lower the corresponding increments and the effect on the residential rate and the commercial rate and the personal property rate. So, the impact of splitting the tax rate on the average property in fiscal 2022. If you look on the left-hand column, you'll see residential, commercial, industrial. And then in the next column is the average fiscal 2022 value. For residential, it was 319,824. For commercial, it was 1,218,946. Industrial is a little over 1.6 million and personal property was 128,289. So, the next column is, would be the tax rate at a single tax rate, which would be 1775 and it varies slightly because of the small business exemption. And underneath that would be the resulting average annual tax bill for the residential property with the average, the median price of assessed value of 319,824. And the far right column is the factor that we're at now, the 1.15, resulting in the residential rate being 1682. Commercial industrial, $20.54. Personal property, $20.41. And underneath that would be the corresponding fiscal '22 actual tax bills, real estate tax bills for each class. And as you can see, it shifts a little bit in the middle. So, the impact of shift change on the base, on the '22 factor of 1.15, if the residential property, if the rate was shifted to 1.14, the average residential property would see a $20 increase. The average commercial property would see their tax bill go down $219 and the average industrial property would see their tax bill go down $288. And with each shift, you can see 113 goes to 39. It's about $19 or $20 on the residential side per factor. The effect of the split rate on commercial industrial assessments. So, if you have property A and there's higher, there's a higher tax rate, then there's going to be a lower net, net operating income resulting in a lower assessment. And if you had a lower, on property B, if you had a lower tax rate, that would correspond to a higher net operating income resulting in a higher assessment. So, higher taxes have a negative impact on building values. Raising the tax rate lowers the assessment, lowering the actual tax dollar gain for the split and discourages commercial industrial growth. This is a snapshot of fiscal '21 local towns and actual taxes. Single family residential, as you can see on the left side column, that's the kind of a budding towns and a couple extra ones with Sutton and Westboro. You can see in the second column, the average single family value for each corresponding community, the corresponding tax community, the corresponding tax rate for each community. And Auburn and Worcester, again, on this list are the only ones with the split rate. All other towns have a single rate. And on the column in the far right, you can see the average um, residential tax bill for fiscal 21 for each one of those corresponding communities. So the average Auburn residential bill, real estate tax bill versus the state average, uh, in fiscal 21, the state average was $6,148, while in fiscal 21, the average Auburn residential real estate bill is $5,114. So Auburn's average single-family real estate tax bill is about 16.8% lower than the state average, while our commercial industrial rate is the 76th highest in the state in 2021, down from the 73rd highest in 200, uh, 2020. So we're still in the top 25% in the state in commercial. Uh, Auburn home value trends, as you can see here, we've mentioned it a few times, but the average median home value for residential property in Auburn is 319,824. You can see how it's continually kind of ticked up over the last several fiscal years. Uh, excess levy history, I think Ed had alluded to this earlier about the fiscal 22, but this chart here goes back to the fiscal 21, which last year, zero percent of, uh, two and a half was utilized. 2021, 1.17, and fiscal 19.74. So you can see the, it's been very conservative on the use of, uh, two and a half. What if we levy to the max? The average residential bill could go up $928 and the average commercial bill could go up over $4,000. And the final page kind of gives a, if you look in the bottom, here's the CIP shift. We're currently at 115, that's why that's highlighted in yellow. And then in the third column over from the left-hand side is the residential rate. Two more columns will give you the commercial rate. And as you increase or decrease the split, you can see the corresponding rates um, that are associated with each one of the splits. And this assumes um, that the small business, commercial will, uh, exemption will be adopted. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Seth. Ask the town manager and CFO if you have anything that you want to add before we go over to questions.
Uh, thank you. I just want to thank Seth for all the work that he's put into this. Um, it's, as you all know, this is a very complex process, uh, so we just want to make sure that we're giving you all the data that you need to be able to make an informed decision. I would, the only thing I would add to everything that's been well said on the excess levy capacity, uh, we are actually number 20 in the state for excess levy capacity. That means there's 331 communities that have less excess levy capacity than us, meaning they tax higher than we do. Um, so we're really proud of the fact that we've kept that excess levy. Uh, we've, we've taxed well under crop two and a half. We continue to do that. It's been a 10-year trend. Uh, we see no reason to change that. We're fortunate we haven't had to have overrides. So, um, I did want to make a point that Auburn is number 20 in the state for excess levy capacity, which is something that we're really proud of. As Ed pointed out, it's over $40 million that we had the ability to use and we didn't use, and we have no intention of using it. Um, so I thought that was an important point to add, but thank you. Just, um, if there are any questions, Seth will remain here. Ed, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight a couple of, um, areas in the presentation. Seth, a great job, I appreciate it. I just want the general public to know that when we look at the, the tax rate, um, a dollar four in terms of FY22 value, so a dollar four in the tax rate is carrying the debt to the new middle school and the high school. That was, that was by voter mandate. So the voters voted to approve those projects. That does have an impact on the tax rate. So we always look at areas of opportunity, uh, to give the board the tools to, to, um, to try to get to a single tax rate. And we know that this isn't, not going to happen overnight. This takes years and I, I think the board has showed that it's made a commitment to doing that, reflective of their votes, uh, since the financial strategy that we're putting into place. I also want to highlight the benefits of its movement towards a single tax rate evident by the, the, uh, page 24 that, that, um, Seth presented tonight. As you can see, the level of, of property classes outside of residential is outpacing that of, of, um, of residential new growth. So for the most part, it's like a 60 to 70, 60 to 70, uh, split percentage basis. 60 to 70% of the new growth is attributable to those areas of commercial industrial property classes. That's evident that I think the migration towards narrowing that gap is paying dividends. Apparently it does have a long-term benefit to the residential taxpayers of this community. By growth in those sectors, that's going to relieve some of the pressure and some of the burden off of the residential property classes. In addition, we try to minimize our level of taxation evident by the, the screen over a 10-year period. We built up excess levy of close to $8 million. We could have taxed all of our property classes at additional to an F on annual basis, but chose not to do so and in a continued effort to try to migrate towards narrowing that gap. So those are the only two items I kind of wanted to draw to your attention, uh, and certainly be happy to answer any questions relative to Seth's presentation or just the overall financial impact this may have on, on all of our taxpayers.
Thank you. Board members, I know you all have a chance to sit down with Ed and Seth, uh, but if any questions or comments now.
I'd like to reserve my time for public comment.
Um, no questions or comments from the board. I have a couple of questions for Seth, uh, and some of these I may have already asked you, but I just want to ask them here as well. Um, so, uh, number one, um, how many small businesses do we have that are part of the small business exemption?
Uh, in fiscal 22, we have identified 79 businesses that appear to fit the criteria to get the small business exemption.
Was that up or down from?
Fiscal 21, we had 78 and fiscal 20, we had 70, uh, fiscal 19, we had 74. So it seems to be trending around the seventies, um, heading up a little bit, I would say.
Thank you. Um, the other question I had is the cost of doing business on page 25 of the presentation, is that counting fees and permits, uh, that businesses would also have to pay as a cost of doing business in Auburn, or is this just looking at, uh, the taxes?
Yeah, it's strictly looking at the commercial real estate taxes, no other fees or cost of doing business, just based on a million-dollar, uh, commercial building, the whole parcel being worth a million dollars, uh, building and the land, just strictly the, um, commercial taxes, that's all.
Yep. And then the other question I had, so we're looking at, at median value for residential property in Auburn at 319,824. Uh, if the board were to keep the same residential factor tonight that we had in fiscal year 2021, um, what would the impact be on, on the median tax bill, uh, from, from last year?
Uh, last year, it would be $265 more on the residential.
That $265 more, uh, even before we, uh, would, would change this, but that's if we kept the same factor.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, that's, those are the only questions I had. Uh, board members have any questions before we close and go to public comment? Seeing none. Um, so we're going to ask members, it's going to be a little bit different this time around, uh, from what we've done in the past, going to ask people who are coming up for public comment to come up to the microphones up here at the desk, uh, and then just wipe them down with the wipes we have after everyone speaks. So, uh, the first one I have signed up is Alex or Virginia. Whichever one of you draws a short straw, I guess.
My name is Virginia Murphy and I'm here on behalf of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your time this evening. Every fall we come here and plead our case that having a fair and equitable tax rate for both the businesses and residents will help the town grow and help spur economic development. As we know, the past 20 months have been extremely difficult for our businesses. Many of our neighborhood brick and mortar businesses have seen historic losses due to the pandemic. While the paycheck protection program helps some of our businesses stay afloat, others weren't as lucky. We saw one in four restaurants across the Commonwealth close their doors for good because of the pandemic. Further, those who did survive have also got hit with rising labor costs. The Unemployment Assistance Trust Fund is protected, is projected to have a $5 billion deficit by the end of 2022. Unemployment assistance premiums are expected to increase at least 319 per employee in 2022, which is a 60% increase to employers. Healthcare premiums for small businesses will increase by an average of 7.9% despite the low use during the shutdown. That represents an annual increase of 648 for individual coverage, 8,808 annual cost, and 1,788 for family coverage, 24,000, $84 annual cost. The paid family and medical leave program will cost employers $1 billion when fully implemented, offering 12 to 26 weeks of paid family leave and 20 weeks of paid medical leave. Over the past four years, this body has steadily continued to close the tax gap, helping businesses stay here in Auburn and attracting new ones. And it's working. We are seeing more businesses come into town and call Auburn their home. Companies are coming here because they see that the town is becoming more inviting and business-friendly. Continuing this voting trend will add to the vitality of the town and increase the taxes, dividing the pie by more payers and therefore lowering the amount owed for all. If we disincentivize companies to come here by increasing their taxes, the money to fund the budget still has to be made up and ironically will be rolled right back onto the residents. Further, a majority of our small businesses have triple net leases, which are lease agreements on a commercial property where the tenant or leasing agrees to pay all real estate taxes, building insurance, and maintenance on top of their typical rent and utility payments. While many states that they support small businesses voting to increase the taxes on their triple net leases says otherwise. It's important to support our businesses here, especially when in time where labor shortages and supply chains are at historic lows, causing companies to close early or for certain days of the week, increasingly stressing their bottom line. We ask that you please continue working to bring businesses into town and make Auburn a destination to live, work, and play. I thank you.
Uh, next on public comment, we have Kerry Cunningham. I'm sorry, I should have asked Virginia to do this, but, um, can you please state your name and address for the record, even though we also have it up here?
Kerry Cunningham, 56 Church Street in Auburn. Good evening, board. Um, my name is Kerry Cunningham. I'm a resident here of Auburn, right down the road. I'm also employed at Fuller Automotive Companies, but I'm also the president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And as president, I do keep a finger on the pulse and I do understand the tax classification issue, but I respect this board because I don't understand it as much as you all do. So thank you very much for that. What I am passionate about is the local business. I'm passionate about local residents who set up a shop and create a place that fosters the growth of our community and right now they are suffering financially. Um, after accepting my current role during the pandemic, I witnessed much hardship among our local business owners, personal stories of heartache and sacrifice and economic downturn. And in a lot of cases, having to reinvent their business models just to stay open and stay afloat so they could support their own families here in town. As part of the Fuller Automotive Companies, also in Auburn, and as a resident, I do see these trials and tribulations of lost dollars. There is going to be an upside someday. I am an optimist, but, um, in reality, that's not going to happen as soon as we had hoped or wished that it would. But just as the consumer pleads with the business owners to service their needs and supply them with goods and maintain an inventory for their consumption, all at minimal cost and profit, I am asking for your help to keep the financial burdens of our local business owners flat. We need to attract more businesses to town and that in turn will lower the tax rate for everyone, business owners and residentialites. I thank you very much for your time. Um, I do now have a letter from Kathy Kirk, who's also a member and director of sales of Holiday Inn Express. Uh, she writes, dear Chairman Liberty and distinguished members of the Board of Selectmen, we are in favor of lowering the taxes, particularly in light of the major changes in our country after the onset of COVID. Prices on all of our supplies, our food, our electricities, as well as our labor have increased substantially. The lodging costs for our guests have raised 40%, making this the highest cost for hotel stays in the 17 years that they've been in Auburn. Having noted that, however, one of the selling points, um, of the Holiday Inn in Auburn is lower taxes and fees for the lodging that we do have here in Auburn compared to the Worcester hotels. To add an increase in taxes would add to the issues financially that we are faced with and it would take away from the small but significant selling point for this hotel. Sincerely, Kathy Kirk, Director of Sales. Thank you.
Next on public comment, we have Roger Robinson from Webster Five.
Uh, my name is Roger Robinson, 35 Chestnut Avenue, Auburn. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, again, I'm Roger Robinson. Um, I'm here as a vice president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, a proud Auburn resident and also a member of the business community. I believe that all three of those distinctions are important to note tonight, uh, as it provides me with a unique and well-rounded perspective on this important topic. Um, as a resident, I obviously empathize with my fellow neighbors, can understand the hesitation that some have, but I ask that everyone be open-minded and consider all the possible benefits that this continued improvement will have on our community going forward. Sitting back and doing nothing is not an option and now more than ever, we need to have a united approach that'll keep Auburn thriving for the future. Working in Auburn as the manager of Webster Five, I've experienced firsthand the challenges and struggles that many businesses have faced over the last two years. The pandemic and subsequent aftermath of the economy has been very tough on many industries and the time is now for us as a community to continue our support and help these businesses that call Auburn home. The opportunity of had to work alongside many of the businesses in our community has provided me an invaluable perspective on this, which has only added to my appreciation for the importance of progressing the issue at hand. I believe there are benefits to be realized by both Auburn residents and businesses alike if we can continue our progress. In closing, I simply ask everyone to truly consider all the facts and to do so with not only your future in mind, but with the future of Auburn, the town we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sarkeesian Jr. I'm here, um, tonight representing the Auburn Chamber of Commerce as well as two other businesses I do operate in this town. I remember when the business tax rate in 2006 was 1.62 and we formed the committee at that time and we all agreed that it was supposed to be a 10-year plan to get back to a single tax rate. Well, now it's been 15 years and we're still not there yet. We are only at 1.15. It's the small local businesses are the ones that are taking the big hits all these years. It's not fear for those businesses, but those are the businesses that are constantly being asked for donations and help from all the different towns, uh, organizations, charities, and civic, uh, organizations. It's not the big box stores that are really helping out. The Auburn Chamber just raised about $25,000 last month in our golf tournament, which is an annual event, and we have given back over $300,000 in scholarships to the Auburn students. So now is the time to make a move. We are asking for, I am asking for a single tax rate. We need to bite the bullet and we need to do it sooner than later. Most of our competing towns have done this. The only one that has not is Worcester, and most likely again this year, they're probably going backwards. If not, these bordering towns will benefit from our loss. Eventually, all our taxes will go down and um, at that point, it'll show how the single, single uh, break will work. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Marty Reisner from Auburn Park. Auburn Park. I'm told he's not here, but I pronounced it right, so that's a win. Matteo Gentile from Exit Realty.
Good evening. Uh, Mattio Gentili, 16 Winchester Ave. I, I moved last year, so I'm still an Auburnite, but closer to Town Hall. First off, I want to thank the leadership of the town. You guys are doing really good and keep up the good work. Thank you. Don't leave. Don't get recruited to some, some other town. And I'd like to thank, thank all of you for making the trend go towards a single tax rate. That's what we've all hoped for. Uh, I remember the first presentation, I brought a whole book of pictures and we called it The Holes of Auburn. Those holes have been filled up and I'm really proud of that um, and all the help you guys have done. But I'm a full-time real estate professional and I thought, I say, how am I going to do a presentation this evening? I said, let's just talk about things I talk about every day with people. How much do you want to buy a house for? How much can you qualify for? Do you know when you buy a higher-priced house, it has higher-priced taxes? I said, boy, I'd love to talk about that. So the house I left is currently assessed for $507,000. The taxes on that house that I left last year, $9,200. I downsized. I chose to move into a smaller house because it's my wife, myself, and uh, two puppies. The house now I live in is a much smaller home. It's assessed for $252,000. My taxes are $4,600 approximately. So half the value, half the taxes. This is simple and this makes sense. We should be taxed on the value of our property. Period. Very simple. Taxes should only be based on what it's valued at. I like the little small business exemptions, but I would love to see us go to a single tax rate tonight. And when you do the math, um, the average house is about 320,000. The differential in taxes, if you multiply it out and then divide it, is 82 cents a day. That would cost the average homeowner to hit a single tax rate. So I'd love to see that happen tonight, so I'm asking us to go to, I'm asking you to vote for 1.0. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Jay Gabor uh, from ATEC.
Good evening. This is my first tax classification hearing. You probably used to see him, my father, Mark Gabor, who's been here uh, many years. He's a snowbird now, so I guess I'm, I'm carrying the reins, but we're the owners of uh, two businesses in Auburn. ATEC at 201 Washington Street and ATEC Turbine Components at 1 St. Mark's Street. It's a family-owned business. My father moved here in 1978 from Worcester. And uh, I remember him specifically telling my mother, we have to get out of Worcester, the taxes are too high. So he ended up in Auburn. In 2008, uh, I've been lucky to have worked in the business since uh, 1982. Next year is actually going to be my 40th year in, in, in a family business. It's pretty hard to believe, but we've seen a lot of growth in Auburn over those years. I think it's no coincidence that as we've seen the tax rate, the commercial tax rate come down, that we've seen uh, really a lot of increase in commercial development and industrial development. Our own business expanded very heavily in 2008. We added a uh, 20,000 square foot manufacturing facility uh, onto our facility at, at 201 Washington Street. We're pondering doing the same thing again in the next two to three years. It's difficult to be a manufacturing business in, in Massachusetts, as, as many of you know. Everybody's got increasing costs, everybody has increasing labor. But we're, we're literally playing um, uh, you know, a little bit behind uh, a lot of the competition of our fellow competitors, many of whom are located down in the, in the Sun Belt and down south, so. You know, taxes are just one part of our costs. Uh, we understand that, but you know, I think sending the right message, making the town business-friendly, we're trying to bring more manufacturing into the area. We think the area has a lot to offer in terms of uh, in terms of talent and uh, you know, Auburn's a great town. We, we love it and uh, we appreciate the efforts you've done over the, the past few years to bring the tax rate down. Uh, I think this is really a, a step in the right direction. We'd love to, I'd love to be able to tell my father, Dad, you don't have to go to those meetings anymore. We're at a single tax rate, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Uh, and next we have Steve Longregan.
Thank you all for allowing us this time to address the board. I want to thank all the businesses who took the time out of their busy night to speak. I want to thank Seth for doing the fantastic presentation as he always does, as he always does. My name is Steve Longregan, past president and owner of Chuck Steakhouse. Proudly being one of the longest-standing businesses here in Auburn nearly 44 years. Small businesses have certainly taken a huge hit during the pandemic. Although many businesses are back open, no one's thriving. The cost of goods have skyrocketed. The uncertainty of deliveries is nauseating. And the limited labor pool has caused most businesses to either have to reduce their hours and that translates into reduced revenues. We have another minimum wage increase coming the first of the year. Gas and electric prices are through the roof. Everywhere you turn, the plight of small business owners gets more and more difficult every day. Many businesses are down 20, 30, even 50%. Who knows when there's going to be another shutdown? Little things like what you guys just did with Darlene and the Board of Health, I can't thank you enough. Those, that might not mean a lot to you, but doing something like that for a small business and allowing them to use up those plastic, plastic bags, not going, having to go out and spend that money and not throw those bags away, that means a lot to us. But this has never stopped us at the Chamber or any of our small businesses from being generous as we possibly can. Helping us, helping as many charities and organizations in Auburn as we can. And the one most important contribution that we make every year is our annual golf tournament. As Mark said, we raised close to 25,000 and we give that back to Auburn High seniors in the form of scholarships. And we also give our mini grants to our teachers. When they have, want to do a special project that isn't budgeted, they come to us and they write, write a, a, a request and we're able to fund their special request that they can go out with their, with their students and do a small project that their budget didn't allow for. These are things that will always be important to us and in addition to growing a healthy and vibrant, vibrant business climate here in Auburn. More businesses mean more jobs and more commerce. Business breeds business. We need to continue to narrow the gap. We need to show the world that we are business-friendly. I believe that we have done so and continue to do so by some of the movement uh, towards a single tax rate. The recent vote to raise the roof, so to speak, with the new construction. Some of these moves have already brought in many new businesses to town. We've filled many of the vacant storefronts that Mattio talked about 10 years ago. We need to continue that push like many of the surrounding towns have already done. To the residents in Auburn with more businesses, is it in a more equitable tax rate? Doesn't mean more taxes for the residents. It means a better Auburn for everyone with a lot more money in the town coffers. To the select men and the select women, you know better than me what's on the horizon for Auburn with a number of projects underway and the tax revenue to be generated in the upcoming year and years. So please, vote to continue to head in the right direction, sending the correct message, message to potential businesses like Webster Five's corporate office, Wolf Solar, Patrick Motors expanding with Patrick Mazza, Patrick Valvo, and the Big Reliant Project last year. The message is clear that Auburn is business-friendly and getting friendlier every year. I'm certainly sympathetic to Mattio and Mark who've been here, coming here since, since the rate was astronomical and that meeting did take place that they spoke of. But you know, to ease, to ease the blow to the citizens and not rip the Band-Aid off, I'm, I think a shift of five points this year down to 1.10 would be great to continue the momentum. And if we can go five points next year and five points a year after that and get to a single tax rate in three years, I think that would be absolutely phenomenal. Thank you all for your time. I'm confident that you will do what's best for Auburn. Thank you.
Next, we have uh, Mr. Wayne Page. You just list your address when you come up.
Wayne Page, 90 O'Common Road. Tonight I've been sitting here listening to all the businesses and their, what they had to say in their scripted letters. I don't have a scripted letter. I have me. I'm a town resident and I pay taxes. And our taxes keep going up and up and up. We don't have a business that's booming to be able to pay our taxes. We have seniors, we have people in town that don't get the big money. They don't have anything to keep raising their funds, to keep paying taxes every year. And to go to a split rate, I'm sorry, I totally disagree with it. I think this meeting, every time we have it, and I didn't make it last year, and I think I made probably quite a few prior to that. I get up here and the businesses sit up here and all the businesses come up here and say this, they need that, they need this. But they're all thriving in Auburn. Now, as one person had said, they have a new bylaws so they can raise buildings. So now you're trying to make Auburn look like Worcester. And one guy had said, well, the businesses breed businesses. Well, when is the voice of the people these days? Well, I'm here to say that I'm here for the people. It's time we care about our residents that vote you people in. We pay our taxes. It gets hotter and hotter every year and you keep changing the rate for the businesses. And the businesses are making the money. You're talking about the COVID. You've got residents in town that got COVID. You've got people in town that can't even afford to go out of their house and raise money for their taxes. But everybody can talk about the businesses being somewhat depleted because of COVID. While the residents in this town are in a works predicament, they're not making money. They're living on social security, disability, or unemployment, or whatever they can to make ends meet. As far as I'm concerned, what you're doing is drowning our residents out of this town. And it's too bad because Auburn used to be, you want to talk about way back, I've been here way back. And Auburn used to be so good and friendly and worked together with everybody. And now the town has become, I call the town administration's Worcester. That's what it's become. It's not here for the people anymore. Let's raise the bill and we'll get more businesses. We'll do whatever we can do to business, 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 business. How many people have talked about the residents in this town tonight? About what they need, or what they have to go through, or what they have to make money and how they make their money? Nobody. Nobody. It's all about the businesses. And I hope you guys realize it. Whether you agree with me or not, I am a resident and I vote and I will support these residents in this town as long as I can breathe. And I just don't understand why, you know, this town has gotten so, so terrible as far as going with the businesses all the time now and not the residents. I wish we could do better for the residents. Our taxes keep going up. I can afford my taxes, but there's people in town that can't afford their taxes. They don't know whether they're going to eat or they're going to get their medicine or they're going to get anything done. They get cooped up in the house and they get lost and they get run over by all this political stuff in our town now. It was never like that before. Now it is, and I'm sorry and I had to come up here and say this stuff because I really didn't want to say too much tonight until I seen what the businesses had to say. You know, there is people in this town and we're going to start caring about the people too. And I say we don't change the tax rate for the benefit of the businesses because they make money. And there's people that are getting their backs broken trying to live with the COVID and everything else, the unemployment. And they raise their taxes. You go to the grocery store, the grocery stores are having trouble, boom, I've sold your, I've sold your food. They don't worry about the people. They worry about making money. Have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Page. Uh, finally and lastly, we have Tom Keys.
Good evening. Uh, Tom Keys, 18 U.S.A. Just kind of short and sweet, while I recognize the plight of the businesses of increased tax rates and a perceived unfairness, I would point out that they have the luxury of raising their rates to what the market will bear. Whereas the normal resident, they don't necessarily have that option to increase their income plus. So while I do, I am sympathetic to the plight of the business, I would kind of point out that if we keep the tax rate favorable for residents, we provide the, the greater opportunity to bring in more residents to the town and hopefully help boost that type of way. Thank you.
Apologize for mispronouncing your name when I called you up. Uh, see one other person? Two. Please uh, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Steve Chambers, 61 Bancroft Street. So I don't own a business here in town. I do support one low rate. I know that the board is working for that. I did want to ask, do we have an exemption for senior citizens to get a discount on their taxes?
Uh, we do. They're available for the, we have a couple hundred seniors that actually qualify and every year they have to fill out an application. It is promoted um, in our office. It has been promoted in the past through senior center workshops. Um, and there are multiple exemptions for people over 65 and veterans. It's mainly income and asset-based. But yes, there are exemptions available. And we have a list of them like in the assessor's office and we promote them heavily every year.
Do you know how many houses have been foreclosed or had a tax lien and repossessed? Okay, I'm just wondering because if taxes increase, like I'm definitely against anyone losing their house due to tax. So I also think that there are members of the community that are doing businesses here and I think we should support them. I think strategically, we've been talking about how to reduce the rate overall. I think we have to cut funding or cut our costs and I know you guys have been doing that. I don't think 2.5% is like a goal. I'm glad we're not there. I'd love to get to negative and start reducing the overall budget, which will bring that down. And I do think one rate will allow us as a community, the businesses and the residents, to actually come here and, or go to the finance committee or talk about the needs and services that we would like. I dislike taxes. I don't want to pay them, but I want the services that come with them. And that's where we're going to make the difference. I know we're not going to change the overall budget. the overall budget, but I do think we need to hurry up and get to a one rate so we can work together as a community. Thank you.
Members. Yes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dorin Goodrich, 501 Good Drive. I'm not going to sit here tonight and ask you to vote one way or another. What I, I wasn't even going to speak. But what I am going to say is I know that each and every one of you do this because you care deeply about the town of Auburn and you care about its residents. Some of you have sat in this chair and taken this vote several years. Some of you, it's your first. But I'm confident that each and every one of you has done your homework, you've done your research. You're going to do what's right for each and every resident. You've weighed what impact COVID has had on the businesses as well as the residents. You've looked at economic development in the town over the last year. You have, you do this each and every day. You understand these tax rates. You understand what's happening in the town. And I just wanted to get up here and say thank you because it can't be said that you don't care about the residents. You do, and thank you for what you're doing.
Before I ask, does anyone virtually, is there anyone else in the audience that wants to say anything? Mr. Page.
Sorry, I had to come back up. I just wanted to disagree with Dorin Goodrich's statement.
He's referring from attacking individuals in the.
It has to do with the tax rate. I believe this board has been favoring the businesses. And I think with the town administration trying to make the tax rate for, to profit the businesses and make Auburn Worcester. We are not Worcester. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I want to ask, does anyone participating virtually that would like to say anything? I only see one participant, so I don't think that's likely, but I want to check. All right, seeing none, going to close the public discussion portion. Move on to board comments and board discussions. Board members have. Board members have comments. Mr. Berthin.
Yeah, I'll get started. I'm absolutely appalled at the accusation that this board doesn't care about residents. Couldn't be further from the truth. Many of the businesses here in town are run by residents of the town. There is no doubt that, you know, there, there are going to be people that are struggling. That's going to happen in every town, every state, everywhere across the country. Fiscally, to be fiscal responsible, you, you need to have a town that thrives. The businesses, as well as the taxpayers, are very instrumental in making that, this town thrive. We work for both things. When you go to the, you know, there's an ignorance there when you think that, you know, businesses just, because you're a business, you're automatically making money. It's not the case. I'm a small business consultant and I see businesses struggle day after day after day. I see costs increase. Now, you, you asked Seth how much the increase would be to the average resident, and it was $265. And what we didn't ask was, what's the increase to the business? So let's start with that. Seth, would you mind giving me that figure? So while Seth is getting that, let me just address the $265 a little bit. You know, businesses, you know, many employees, I should say, are now involved in 401K plans and everything else. And, and I think that a lot of people can agree with me that 401K plans have looked pretty good over the last couple of years. Okay? And those increases are very favorable. Businesses that are struggling don't have that money to invest that, that can, can take advantage of those increases. So there's one case. The other case is you're increasing by $265, but the average value of the home has gone up. So it's made people that have wanted to sell or, you know, maybe upgrade or whatever, it's made it very attractive for them. So with the, the increase in tax comes an increase in value, increase in, in borrowing power. You know, if, if you owe $100,000 on a house that was worth, you know, $200,000 and now all of a sudden it's worth $300,000 and the interest rates with the banks are pretty good, you just built yourself quite a bit of equity and borrowing power. So there's a lot of advantages that residents get that the businesses don't. Okay? We're talking about FMLA with, with Massachusetts. The businesses didn't necessarily ask for that, but they get taxed on that now. And it's not a choice of theirs. If they have 25 employees or more, they're getting taxed on it. Okay? Do they get any benefit from that? Not a dime. Okay? So they're already paying their, their half of social security. Now they're paying their portion of FMLA. Okay? They're, they're paying increased minimum wage now. And, you know, they're having to do all of this in the middle of business being down. And so when I talk for the businesses today, it has nothing to do with whether I want to help the residents or not. Okay? Because I always want to help the residents. I am one. Okay? Basically, all right, I am trying to help the businesses and I'm trying to entertain, have businesses fill where the Yankee drummer was. Have businesses work where the Auburn Mall is. This isn't taking land away from residents. Okay? We've been very instrumental in, you know, for people that possibly elderly that can't afford their housing, we, we have the school projects. There's things coming down the line that the town of Auburn is working on that can help some of these people. Now, if you want to stay in your house, if you're a senior and you want to stay in your house and you can't afford it, despite everything that we try to do to help you to stay in your house, I'm sorry. I already know, and I've said this before. I wasn't, I was a, a small business person in town. Okay? I still am. But I wasn't able to put money away when I was 20 years old, 30 years old, 40 years old. It wasn't until my mid 40s that I went to work for somebody that I started putting into a 401K. All right? Because of that, I already know that I can't afford to live in Auburn when I retire. That's a decision that I make. All right? That's a, that's, that's something that, you know, I love this town with all my heart. But, you know, everyone makes choices along the way, along their, you know, their life. And we're going to continue to do everything we can for the seniors that we possibly can. We formed a committee. We, we raised every single one of the, the credits to the maximum about a year, two years ago. All right? We're doing everything we can, but we have to do it within guidelines. We can't just say like, hey, you know what? Let's just give the seniors an, an extra, you know, $1,000 to their real estate taxes. We can't do that. We're not allowed to do that. Okay? So we're helping these people to get up and to, you know, say that these businesses, uh, uh, reading a boilerplate letter is unfair. All right? I am so appalled. Okay? And, and thank God that that's not representation of what I believe most of our residents feel. But these businesses have done unbelievable, unbelievable things for the residents of this town. These businesses have supported my kids that are 26 and 22 now on every step of the way, sponsoring teams, giving scholarships, sponsoring teachers. Okay? I don't, I don't want to hear this. Okay? So you need to stop that right now.
No comments in the public. That's just making noise or you'll be asked to leave.
So they also have a meeting once a month and they, they let schools put a list on their table of things, supplies that they need, each of the schools. And they, they donate their supplies to, to, to the kids. There's so many things that, that these businesses do. And keep in mind, as they came up and they introduced themselves, many of them are residents in the town. So we're helping businesses and we're helping residents. Okay? And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't get to the single tax rate, which we know is going to boost economy, boost business, and it's going to make a positive impact on the town. Now, if we don't want to go to a single tax rate, then I believe that, you know, we should at least go to the 5% or the five points. The difference on the five points is, by my calculations, about $99.60 to the average resident. Okay? That's going to, that's going to help the business to the tune of about $1,000. So you're talking $2 a week to the resident. Okay? And you're going to help the businesses, who basically will probably turn around and give it right back to the town. But it gets you closer. It makes the town more attractive for businesses coming in. It may help us to fill some of these vacant lots. It may help us to attract things, businesses toward like the Auburn Mall. All right? There's a lot of advantages to what's going on here. And you have to understand the whole fiscal sense of it to, to know that going to a single tax rate is a positive thing. I understand that we, we don't want to make that jump to a single tax rate, but we can certainly, certainly go at, you know, $2 a week for the residents and go to a 5%. And, and if we can do that and we can do it next year and the following year, we can stop having these meetings. And the town can start to flourish the way it should flourish. So I'm proposing that we go 5% this year and hopefully we can continue that trend for two more years and, and get this thing resolved.
Other comments from board members? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Berthin, for your comments. First off, I'm going to keep mine a little bit more brief. And I don't make, I don't care to make this a debate on Mr. Page's comments and with many factual inaccuracies, to be honest. But chief among them, Mr. Page, we're here for the people. We were here by the people.
Sorry, Mr. Brown, but please address through the chairman.
We are here for the people. Otherwise, Mr. Waller, thank you for that presentation. Very good, as always. And thank you to Julianette for your, really for your being so financially responsible and not taxing that two and a half percent. As you said, that money saved could easily be done by, you know, by the town meeting members and by you guys and you could look at that two and a half every single year. So, so there has been money saved. As far as ripping the Band-Aid all in one shot, I am support, I am very much in support of a single tax rate. The weight of this seat makes it such that I, I want to do it responsibly. I believe in doing it responsibly, but to that end, last year, given COVID, I don't think we moved that much. I don't think we made a meaningful move getting to that single tax rate for obvious reasons due to the uncertainty of COVID. So this year, I would support. I, I'm open to see what other, other members have for what they'd support, but I'd support minimum dropping two points.
Other board members, any comments?
I will make it brief as well. I think I could support dropping like a point or two. The fact of the matter is the residents have suffered from COVID too. There has been issue, you know, that across the board. And I think that by dropping a point or two, we can responsibly help the residents and help out the businesses.
Before we move on, I noticed Seth was back. I don't know if you had an answer to Mr. Berthin's question.
The difference in the. What timeline?
Yeah. I mean, we, we can kind of do the math, but basically my question was, you know, Tristan had asked you what the, if, if we stayed at the 1.15, what was the increase to, would be the increase to the residents? And it was $265 for, for 22. My question was, going by that same calculation, if we stayed at the 1.15, what would be the increase to the businesses this year for 22?
It's kind of a difficult question because we have it just separated out by commercial and industrial. Strictly on the commercial class, it would be at the 1.15. Based on the higher valuation, the commercial, a thousand. The, the commercial would pay $1,357,000 less. But the industrial has gone up. So that's kind of, we're just looking at the commercial and it's kind of more involved question. The industrial would be. Okay, so the industrial would be. Two, eight, seven, minus. Industrial would be about $863 less at the same factor.
For 22. Okay, thank you.
What was that number again? 800 and? Then 1,357 for business?
For a commercial.
For a commercial. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Preppa.
Always interesting. Thank you all for coming. I don't view this as resident-first business. I don't think, with either of us are in separate camps, nor should we be. We share a community, whether it's from nine to five or 24/7. It doesn't really matter. You've made a major investment in town, as has every resident in town. Probably the most significant investment of your lives. And every year I, I have sat here, the tax rate has gone down. Whether we've moved the factor or not on your properties, in every year, the tax has gone up on, on the resident. So I looked and I said, geez, from 2006, what was, we've basically doubled the rate on residences in 15 years. And as nobody here has served for 10 years or longer, the only one who did walked out a little while ago. So this board made no commitment. Whether a prior board urged something, they never made a vote. So there is no commitment. Without a vote, there's no commitment. The board acts through votes. I am not in favor of moving it back this year because I feel that we have done so over the years. And I think it's time for the residents, they're going to get an increase this year. You're going to get a decrease. And that's, I'm not going to quarrel about that. But I just think that we do need to focus. COVID is a real thing. People have suffered, not just businesses, but the people who work there. So I am not in favor of moving the factor this year. As the economy grows and changes, I'm certainly willing to look at it. But for me, it's, I don't think about it just tonight. I think about it pretty much throughout the year. And I ask my questions throughout the year. So, you know, I come in knowing. So, you know, I come in knowing what I'm going to do based on the facts, not because I dislike you, not because I think that you're making a million dollars and gosh, living some fabulous life. And if you are great, I, I don't really, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. But the residents do not have the options that you have. In any other sector of the economy, businesses and residents are treated differently. This is the only place that I hear people say that it's unfair for businesses to be charged a different rate, when every business does this. Every bank charges a different rate. If I go and I want to buy a four-family and, and have that for rental, I'm going to pay a higher rate than if I go and I buy a house just for me. So in every sector of the economy, business is treated differently. I have followed with interest the UI process. I know the legislature is looking at trying to close the gap there. And I know the grand bargain is, you know, probably not feeling so grand to some of you. But there was some give and take on the employee side too, in the grand bargain. Two and a half on Sunday is going away for a lot of employees. So there has been some give and take. So, you know, let's, let's be truthful as much as we can, that we all give little and we get a little. I'm not in favor. I appreciate my colleagues' comments, you know, I think they're always well-informed and they have their point of view. But there's a reason why they elect five of us and not one of us. So if there are three of us who want to move the rate, that's fine, I'll be in the vote this year. But I appreciate everything and wish you the best of luck in the year to come.
Just, just in response, um, nobody said that, you know, uh, it was unfair to, to, to make the businesses pay more. What I'm saying is it makes fiscal sense for the town to get to a single tax rate and to continue to decrease the businesses. It, it makes fiscal sense to, uh, it, it invites more business in, in industry into the town. Once you get those industrial and those businesses, uh, all of the vacancies filled, then the residents are going to see an advantage from that. That's what I'm saying. I didn't know, I didn't mean, I didn't, didn't say that it was unfair and, and don't think that it's unfair. I'm saying that we should do what makes fiscal sense. And, uh, I in no means, like I said before, I care about the residents deeply, but, you know, with progress, uh, comes expense. And, you know, at some point, I, I just, I just look, the last, I think it's three years, we went down 1.1.1 point. And, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's small and it's not making a big difference. And even $1,000 to a million dollar valuation, you know, is, is, it's, it's piddly. And, and it's not going to encourage businesses to come here. And I don't want to, you know, you talk about, you know, Shaw's, uh, you know, they can raise their prices. Well, they can't, because if they raise their prices, then Auburn residents are going to go out of Auburn, they're going to get on 395, they're going to go five minutes down the road, and they're going to go to Market Basket, okay? They're going to go to Milbury. And so you can't just say that businesses can do this and businesses can do that. Yeah, we, residents are feel, definitely feeling some pain. We feel pain at the pumps, okay? Businesses are feeling that pain tenfold. And so that's why I'm fighting for the residents, but for the businesses as well. And I think Mr. Carpenter said it very eloquently, that we're in this together, uh, we're not trying to separate residents and business. What we're trying to do is do what's best for the town and best for everybody in the town. And that's why I think that, that we should make the move, make a move tonight. So, um, I, I would, you know, like, if, if either of my colleagues wants to suggest, I mean, obviously they're not willing to go as far as I am, so, uh, you know, go as far as you can and, and make a motion.
Just as a point of clarification, um, a thriving and growing business community in our zoned districts that are in line with the changes we've made to the zoning bylaws will lower the tax base for the residents. That's my theory that I believe in. So it is for the Auburn people, it is for the residents, and it's working together with the business community.
So my concern is for people that are on a fixed income, and with the price of heating going up, and I, I understand it goes up for everybody, um, but, you know, $2 a week could, could make a big difference to somebody.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, and, and I, and I'm, I'm just, again, um, not arguing the point, because you're absolutely right, that, you know, fuel is going up and heating oil. Um, we do have programs in town that, that, you know, help people with oil assistance and, and things like that. That's where some of these things come into play. Um, as an example, the fire department, uh, came to, um, us, a couple of us, a couple of years ago, and, and they come across people that they may go and they may see an elderly and, and, um, and they find out that that elderly, uh, uh, cold because they ran out of fuel. And so they want to, the fire department wants to have some, some money available so that they don't have to go to the town or, or anything else. They want to just be able to, uh, go buy 100 gallons of, of fuel. And who's probably going to fund that? The businesses in town, you know? I can already say that, uh, I've already offered as a business in town to, to throw some money there. And, and again, hopefully the, the, you know, the residents that, that are more well-off will, will help that. But these are the types of things that the town goes to the businesses and the businesses respond. And, and this is, again, you know, people, people can have their hardships and they can ask for help. The businesses, you know, can't, aren't going to go to the residents and say, hey, you know, I'm struggling, do you think, uh, you know, you could throw some money our way? But the residents go to the businesses and ask that. So, um, again, it's just another example of where the businesses really, you know, help out and come through for the town. And, and I completely agree that, you know, we, as a community, both businesses and residents and, uh, select board and everybody else in town, we need to really pay attention to this winter and, and residents and, and, you know, make sure that people aren't, you know, freezing, uh, because they can't afford a, a heating bill or that, you know, they, they can't get a ride to the store, you know? That's a community thing. A community thing looks after their elderly. And that's something I think that Auburn has always done a pretty good job with, and I think we should continue to do that. I think with Auburn Youth and Family Services, we do one hell of a job here in Auburn. So that's a matter of knowing where the issues are and, and we can help take care of those issues. But I think a lot of times we rely on the businesses to, to accomplish that. And just another reason why I think we should, you know, again, uh, throw a little bit at them this year.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that when I speak, I speak for me. I'm not addressing your comments, your comments, his comments, the guy over there or the guy in the back row. It's, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not the neck. So I would just ask that sometimes these things get a little heated and, you know, we all have our point of view and you think that this is the right thing to do, and I respect that. And I've never criticized any member of the board for the vote that they've taken. But I do feel that I get criticized for the vote that I take. Now, I've spent as much time, or maybe more, on this process, and I've come to my conclusion. And I'm going to stick with that conclusion, not because I think I'm right 100% of the time, but I think in this particular case, every year that I've sat on this board, there has been a reduction. So maybe a thousand bucks isn't much for this or that, but the residents didn't get that $1,000. So I would just point that out. The residents, every year, have gotten an increase, whether we moved it or not. Now, that is, as Seth says and Julie and Ed will tell us, you know, a function of town meeting. And town meeting doesn't ask a lot of questions about the budget, and, you know, that's their right as elected officials to do what they think is right for the town. I'm doing what I think is right for the town. And I think not moving this year, being open to future years, you know, is, is as far as I'm willing to go. Do I respect everybody up here? Absolutely. It is not an easy vote. But I think we have to look at the trends, and the trends have been going back towards the residents to the tune of twice of what it was 15 years ago. And in the seven years that I've been sitting here, the pandemic swung back towards the business community. So we are being business friendly. We are doing our bit. Even if we don't take action, they're seeing a savings. So to me, if you told me you were going to give me a check for $1,000 today, I wouldn't say that's not enough. I wouldn't say, geez, no thank you. I would take the $1,000 and go, because I would be grateful that my costs have gone down, that somebody saw my need and they addressed it. I don't think that we, you know, should look at $1,000 as a small amount of money. I mean, we build $40 million buildings, like, you know, money grows on trees sometimes. And we're looking at another $40 million building. And what's that going to do to the residential tax rate? What is that going to do for the seniors? You know, we can say, you know, yeah, there are things out there. It's one-time help. I was part of keeping Auburn warm. We had a dinner every year and, and mostly elderly people came and they supported it. And we did also go to the businesses and they gave us raffles. And I donated raffles and many other members of the committee donated raffles. That's what you do in a community. But it was a one-time gift. So, and I also know that with, you know, the lie heat money, some of these people are waiting until March to get that money. So they could be a popsicle in their apartment by the time the federal government releases that money. So yeah, there's help out there, but it's not always when it's necessary, and it's not always an enough of an amount to make a difference. You know, their costs have gone up, their healthcare has gone up, their bills have gone up. You know, we talk about, you know, businesses having licensing fees. Well, so don't the residents. They pay their water bill, they pay their sewer bill, they pay their trash bill in addition to this. And those have gone up. And they're not means tested. So, you know, we do need to think about that. And that's what I'm thinking about tonight, and that's how I'm going to vote, and however anybody else does, I mean, I'm going to part his friends with everybody up here. Because I know you did the work and you've come to your conclusion. I respect your decision, respect mine.
I'll respond to that, um, in saying that I absolutely respect your decision, and I always do. And, you know, I, I don't want you or anybody to, you know, think that I don't respect this board with the votes that they make every time we make a vote. Exactly why we have five people up here. You, you can have five different, uh, train of thoughts. I think we, we pretty much do today. Um, and I will respect your vote, um, and I respect what you have to say. I'm just speaking my piece, just like you speak your piece, and my reasons why I want to, I want to see, uh, some movement. That's, that's all I'm doing. So, um, you know, I, I don't want anyone to think that, that I'm not respecting somebody because I disagree with you, okay? Thank you.
So this is the best benefit of being chair, because I get to go last. So there's a lot that I want to touch on. I guess I'll start with this. So the 1970s, I mean, the state legislature adopted the dual rates as a way to combat residential values that were rising much faster than commercial values. I think in the last year, we've seen a lot of that. Uh, so I think we've seen the whole reason for, um, a, a split rate. Now, I have said in the past, and I stand by the opinion, that the town will do better in the long term. When Mr. Chambers was up here, I agreed with everything he said. In the long term, the town will absolutely benefit from going to a single rate. Uh, however, I think that move should be as slow as possible and as painless as possible toward the residents. And I, I think anything the board does to make that a slow move, um, is beneficial to everyone involved. Uh, I also want to say that I did come into this meeting with an opinion. Um, I had expressed that to one of the board members and, uh, but I, I like to think to pride myself on the fact that I will come into a meeting, even if I think I'm going to vote one way, open-minded, listening to whatever point of view comes before us, and, uh, am willing to change that opinion if, if I hear new information. And I think board members will attest to, uh, that I am very open to, to hearing things. That said, um, my opinion hasn't changed. I think this is a bad year to move on the tax rate. We have established a subcommittee, uh, that's specifically looking at this issue and trying to find a way to make it as painless as possible for the residents. Uh, and Mr. Ren and I have served on that committee, and one of the things that we've looked at is looking back at tax bills over the past five or three years, averaging that out, finding what the standard deviation would be over the, the tax bill increases for residents over those years, and then, um, allowing, uh, fluctuation based on those numbers. Now, to boil it down to what we've kind of had, and we haven't brought this idea before the board yet, um, over the last five years, taxes would have gone up an average of $156 a year, uh, if I'm looking at our numbers correctly. If you looked at three years, it's $94 a year for, this is the median residential house. So if you looked at what half the standard deviation of the, the difference was over the five years, it would be about $23 in additional movement. So basically what it came down to was, uh, an increase of $179 would be, uh, allowed. And, and this is just, again, not a policy of the board, nothing official, but this is something we've talked about and something that I think might be a good idea. Now, we've heard from the town assessor that we're looking at $265 increase on residents before we even look at moving on the rate tonight. Uh, and a big reason for that is residential property values have skyrocketed this last year. Uh, on top of that, which, um, Mr. Carpenter touched on, but I didn't hear much from, um, we voted at our last meeting to raise the fee for solid waste. That's another thing that's going to have to come out of the pockets of residents. I mean, those things combined, you're already looking at $290 of an increase, if my math is right. And again, that's before we even start to look at the rate. I do think moving down to a single rate is beneficial to everyone in the long run. This year, it just is not, in my opinion, a good year to move on it. The Tennessee fellow mentioned, I think, it might have been at our last classification meeting, um, that there is an option to potentially use free cash in the future. Um, you know, with, with the schools coming off of the tax roll, we might have a little bit more space, um, and that might lessen the blow of residents. I completely support that after having thought about it for a while. Uh, and if we couldn't make a big jump in one year without the residents feeling it, I'd be all for it. Mr. Berthin mentioned the, uh, tax cuts to the elderly, and that was a subcommittee that he actually proposed his first year on the board. Um, and I don't think he gets enough credit for actually coming, bringing that before the board, proposing that, and then seeing that through and making sure that the board did bring up, um, those tax cuts to the maximum that they are allowed under, uh, state law. So Auburn has, at least at the time of that committee, and it probably still now, because I doubt the legislature's moved on it, um, the highest that we can, uh, give for tax rates to the elderly. But it sounds like it's something at this point that we might want to bring to our state delegation, uh, and we can all discuss that at a later time, because maybe they need to take a look at that and allow us to expand those credits even further. Uh, but as of right now, um, Auburn did push to the furthest, and, uh, I want to thank Mr. Berthin for bringing up originally before the board and then serving on that subcommittee and seeing through that the board did that. Yeah, one else other thing, point that I want to address is that, uh, you know, home values have gone up, and that's great if you want to sell. There are a lot of people in town who don't want to sell. Well, a lot of people who want to stay in town who may not want to move, um, even into the apartments that were just built. And, uh, we have to keep that in mind and not, not think that we're taxing them out of their homes. I think those are the major points that I want to touch on. And I don't see anything else in my scattered notes, so I'll leave it at that. And if there are no other comments from board members. And if there are no other comments from board members. To close the hearing.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it's unanimous. With that, is there a motion? Regarding the selection of a residential factor?
I would make a motion that we make no movement this year.
Mr. Carpenter has made a motion to make no movement this year. That would be to adopt a residential factor of one point one five. Is there? And Mrs. Ruffley has seconded the motion. Uh, I'm going to do this by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
No.
And the chair votes yes. Motion is passed. We've adopted a residential factor of one point one five, keeping with what we've discussed for a year. Uh, I'm going to ask for a one-minute recess to allow the room to clear. Have a motion.
So move. Before we do, Mr. Chairman, we haven't voted on the discount for the exemption.
Oh, do we have to go over that before we go into recess? Okay.
I would make a motion that we do not adopt the open space discount because we don't have enough to make that any sense.
Second. Yeah. Can I ask members to, or, excuse me? Can I ask people from the public to clear? Uh, motion's been made by Mr. Carpenter to not adopt, adopt the open space discount.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those, uh, but we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Not adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion, make a motion that we do not adopt a residential exemption as it does not really suit the character of the community.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. For the small commercial exemption.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt the small commercial exemption. And I, and I would just like to point out that we are one of less than fifteen towns in the Commonwealth who actually buys this pretty much every year since its existence. So I think we are adding extra help to the business community by adopting it.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley? Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Oh, um, the percentage of the acceptance. Mr. Carpenter?
Um, I believe we usually use ten percent. Yes. I apologize, I will make that part of my motion if that's acceptable to the second. All right. I would make a motion that we turn to a five-minute.
I don't know if that's needed anymore, but the motion's been made.
I think I could use a two-minute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? One minute, five-minute recess?
This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Welcome back. Um, can I have a motion to move up agenda items six B and six C and take them as one?
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor? Uh, yeah, six, six C and D. C, C and D, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
C, D and E?
C, D and E.
Sure.
Sure, C, D and E, sure.
Well, make that a motion that C, D and E of six can be moved up and taken as one topic.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for doing that. So these are really, uh, combined items. For those people who are watching and don't see the agenda, we're combining just updates on the Mary D. Stone Apartments, the Julia Bancroft Apartments, and the tie-in to the playgrounds that the town maintains. So for those of you who, um, who are here, you all know, but some people have asked, so I thought it would be important to say. When the town sold the two schools that were vacant, we, uh, split off the town fields and playgrounds and we maintained ownership of that. And I should say retained ownership of that. And Penrose Development purchased the property immediately surrounding the buildings. So the town still owns the playground as we still own the field. And as you can see, uh, some of you were on a tour that we had a week ago. The Mary D. Stone Schools coming along. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. They've done a tremendous job with the historic preservation aspects of it, keeping some of the old historic parts of the old building from, uh, and Mary D. Stone, it was nineteen twenty-eight, and Julia Bancroft was nineteen twenty-seven. And just some really unique features that we all got a chance to see. So as part of the, uh, development agreement, the, uh, developer, Penrose, had, uh, had offered the town twenty-five thousand dollars toward each playground for some renovations. And of course, we go back to this, um, probably some four years ago. And playground prices four years ago have really exploded. Uh, twenty-five thousand four years ago, probably wouldn't have bought an entire playground, but it would have definitely done some upgrades. But at this point, uh, the Boyce Street Taunt Lot, which was about two and a half years ago, Joanna, was, uh, fifty thousand dollars. And that was the same equipment that we wanted to purchase for Mary D. and Julia Bancroft. And that price now, I think COVID and supply chain issues and other, uh, economic issues, that price is up to seventy-five thousand. If we didn't place the order initially by Thursday, um, and they extended it to today and we are set, but if we had not placed the order, it would have gone up another eighteen percent. So for the two playgrounds to be replaced at Mary D. and Julia Bancroft would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, they were not able to be salvaged, particularly the Mary D. Stone Playground was not in good shape at all. Once it had to be, um, removed or relocated, we were concerned about it anyway. That was something that we've been looking at replacing down the road. Uh, the Julia Bancroft Playground has deteriorated, you know, as they all do when they're, when they're older and they're metal, things start coming apart. For safety purposes, we believe that that should be replaced, not, uh, not just upgraded. There were too many things wrong with it to just do an upgrade. We're talking about safety of children. So to replace both, um, would be at the same level of, of equipment. Would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we've been very fortunate. We are going to be able to do that at no cost to the taxpayers in that, uh, we have the twenty-five thousand dollars for each playground from Penrose, so that's fifty. Then we've asked for and received an earmark from the state for twenty-five thousand dollars for the Mary D. Stone Playground and fifty thousand dollars for playgrounds in Auburn in general. So the DPW went out and did an analysis of all our playgrounds and came back and said, really, the worst playground that needs to be replaced is the Mary D. and the Julia Bancroft. After that, down the road, we're looking at Rocketland as being something that really we're, we're going to look to see if we can get some funding for that in the near future. But the two that really needed it the most are the two that we happen to have funding for. So if you take the fifty thousand from Penrose, the fifty thousand from one of the stadium marks the twenty-five for the other, uh, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, nearly twenty-five thousand dollars short. And I, I will bring this in at some point for you to formally accept it, but I'm really happy to tell you that Penrose Development has said that they would come up with the additional funding if we're not able to find it in any other grant sources that we're still working for. They will make up the additional twenty-five thousand dollars. So we were able to go ahead based on that and order the playgrounds. Uh, that order went in this afternoon. And that blocks in the price for us. And it also hopefully gets all the equipment to us for installation in, uh, spring. Um, so I just want to make sure the board is aware that Penrose is, that they, it was an extra amount that they were willing to give us from the very beginning. They said, if twenty-five thousand isn't enough for the playground, you let us know. And, you know, we'll see what we can do to help you out. We want to make sure that we have good playgrounds there. You know, it's hopefully intergenerational. You know, the people who live in the Mary D. Stone Apartments and in Julia Bancroft, and they'll have their grandchildren come. Or maybe they don't even know who's out there, but they'll sit outside and watch a game and, you know, or watch the kids playing on the playground. You just want to make sure that we have safe facilities. So we're really excited. We got that ordered. And I just wanted to publicly thank Penrose because they really, um, they, they were just, they offered to do this early on. And when we were explaining to them the cost and we told them that the price had gone up, uh, they said, what, what are you short? What, what's your, what's your delta? And they said, we will help, we'll come up with the twenty-five thousand. So I just want to show you, we're, we're going to keep looking. There was one other grant source we were looking at. I don't believe we're going to be eligible this fiscal year. And the other state dollars we have to spend this fiscal year. So the only way to get this done is to really order it now and pay for it and get it all installed by the, by the spring. So I just wanted to let you know. And at some point, we'll just make it formal and bring it in for you to accept the additional twenty-five thousand dollar donation from Penrose for the playgrounds. And then, uh, over time, we're looking and we're going to come up with a plan for the Rocketland Playground as well. Uh, and we have some thoughts on that for the May town meeting. Uh, with probably a town meeting vote to out, reallocate some funds so we can get that done too. And then all of our playgrounds will be in very good shape. Um, we'll continue to apply for grants. We've got an ADA grant out right now, uh, wherever we can. Obviously, the new playgrounds are ADA accessible. There are additional features that you can add. Um, for instance, the, what do you call it, Joanna? The ground, the, the flooring? Yeah, the, the, there's an additional surface that you can add, but that additional service alone, just for one playground is fifty thousand dollars. And it's not required, it's just something that's an additional. So down the road, if we can get some grant money and do some additional improvements, that's what I'll do. So I just wanted to mention that. So the Mary D. Stone School should be opening, uh, shortly. I'd say within a week or so. As you can see, they are replacing the fields to the condition that they were in previously. They're, um, seeding them, putting everything back. They've got some nice landscaping that we didn't have before and that we have now. So it's, it's really going to look very nice. And the Julia Bancroft School should be done by next July, possibly August. It will be in the summer. And in January, just so the public knows, in January, Penrose will have on their website the application process to get your name in on a list full of lottery, uh, for the Julia Bancroft School. So the whole process will be repeated for what they did for Mary D. Stone. So there is a waiting list for Mary D. Stone. Should people drop off, they do have a waiting list. But if you are interested in being considered for the lottery at Julia Bancroft, we want the public to know you have to reapply. If you put in an application for Mary D. Stone under the state guidelines, you have to specifically apply for the building. So please let everyone know. We have information on our website. We'll just keep pushing this information out. But I, I assume some of you are getting the same, uh, questions that we're getting. So I just want to keep you updated on that.
Board members, any questions or comments? I just have one of them. Uh, someone is trying to live in Mary D. They've submitted their application and now they didn't get it. They're on the waiting list. They want to apply to JV. Do they have to withdraw their application from Mary D. or do you?
No, I'm pleased with them. They can leave their application in at Mary D. Because as you figure through attrition and as people drop off and maybe don't live there anymore or move or for some reason they don't end up moving in, there'll be vacancies coming up. So I would suggest that they keep them in on Mary D. And then it is a pretty interesting lottery process. And as you all recall, we had asked for a preference to Auburn residents and the state approved that preference. So it's, uh, seventy percent preference. So seventy percent have, uh, first priority on the lottery if you're a current Auburn resident, which is great. Yes. It is. So we're excited about the playgrounds. Um, that was a, that was a big thing. And sad to see the prices go up, but not surprising given the cost of supplies and materials now. It's just, it's crazy, uh, the kind of prices that we're seeing. And these, the company that we're going with is a very reputable company. They're on the state bid list. We've purchased our equipment from them before. And we have confidence that they're guiding us in the right direction on the type of equipment to get.
Questions or comments? Just say it's very nice of Penrose to step up and drive a go.
Yeah, I, I will tell them and again, I'll bring in a formal item for the board to accept this. Want to make sure I gave you a heads up as to how we're going to handle it and then I'll bring them in.
Uh, under communications, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's our next, yes, it is. Uh, communications, we have none. Uh, select board general items, number five A. We have a vote to execute the grant easement at one ninety Washington Street. This is Article nineteen, the town meeting warrant.
For the chair, thank you, yes. So, uh, as you know, Article nineteen, uh, gave the Board of Selectmen the authority to execute the grant of easement. So I brought that with you this evening. Attorney Henigan said technically you probably don't need, uh, to have a vote because town meeting just took that vote. But it would just be, uh, we just thought it would be easier and better if you did take that extra vote to, vote to sign it tonight as opposed to just leaving it out there. Um, so just make public the vote for the grant of easement. Uh, so everything is in here and there is a place for each member to sign for the grant of easement. Then the process is, once this gets signed, uh, Penrose brings the, excuse me, Penrose, Eastland Partners, uh, brings the check to us for the easement. And then they are responsible for filing it at the Registry of Deeds and taking care of the legal filing.
Questions or comments?
I, I'm sorry, but two hundred dollars normally is what the easement costs. So we had to get, um, a, a formal, uh, official, professional appraisal. And when we first saw it, we all said that's, something's wrong. It's missing some, it's missing a zero. There's something not right there. So actually, it, we went through the entire appraisal process and all the documents and all the comps. And it's absolutely, it was exactly right. The reason being, the town-owned land for which we're granting an easement, first of all, if you were to sell it, the sales value would be far higher because they would own it. They are not owning it. It's an easement, it's giving them the right to access, but they don't own it. So it doesn't add to their property value. And it's that ownership versus, it, it's basically a lease. They're leasing. They're, they have lands that they are able to use. The other, the main part was the town land that the easement is on is zoned residential. And it's not only zoned residential, but it's zoned residential backland. So the land is landlocked. There's no way to get to the town's land. So there's the, the per value, the per acreage value of property like that in the assessor's world was about eleven hundred dollars an acre. And this was, um, about, you know, one-fifth of an acre. So because there's no way to use that property for anything other than the town just holding the land. So it really brought the values down. Had it been, uh, street-facing or had access on Route twenty or been commercial or industrial, the value would have been higher. Um, but because it's backland and residential land unusable and it's not a sale. So the assessor, uh, the appraiser, the professional appraiser that you hire, goes out and gets all the comps. And he, he said it's very difficult to get comps for that because there aren't a lot of back parcels of residential land that are granting easements, uh, for sewers. So he said the value is just so nominal. So yeah, it was, it, it was an eye-opener for us as to how it works because we truly did think it was going to be a little higher. But when we went through, you know, the hundred-page document on, on all the comps and all the appraisals and how the calculations went, it did make sense. Uh, this, this is a licensed registered appraisal that, um, we've used this company before. And the, uh, company owner actually is an appraiser in a, in a city nearby east of your town now. I think he just moved to a city. So that is his permanent job, but he also has a company. So we entered into the contract with the company. But it's a great question, um, because it just, it did stand out. And at town meeting, we brought the appraisal with us. We were ready to answer any questions that may come up on it because to all of us, it seemed unusual as well until we actually read the entire report.
Any other questions or comments? That was also my question, I think, ahead of town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, I also thought that there would be a lot more discussion on that article, but it turns out that there was more on other articles. Um, you really wouldn't think would get questioned. Uh, anyway, just knowledge of town meeting. Uh, I did have a question, uh, on this one, and I've already, I asked you in the past, but I just wanted to reiterate. Um, so people have come up, uh, to me with concerns about, uh, there were town meeting members asking ahead of the, the meeting about, uh, whether the sewer could handle the increase. uh, and I don't know if you wanna hand this over.
Yeah, if Joanna could come up, that absolutely was something that was looked at, uh, and I think one more question is whether 50 Washington would end up going in on this. That would still be a separate permit that they'd have to apply for, but we do have the capacity, but Joanna can give the more detailed explanation of that.
At any point in time, um, whoever is, is, whatever business is gonna go in there, they're gonna come to, um, the sewer commission or the sewer division and apply for a permit. And, um, you know, if, you know, like I said, the distribution center is not expected to have a lot of sewer use, but any other business, um, if, if we're looking at, you know, a higher use, evaluate.
And through the chair, also, just, um, I'm not sure Tristan, if you had asked, if somebody else had asked, but the sewer commission did look at all the options that were available for, uh, for a sewer, for access to a sewer, and this was the one that they recommended, uh, primarily because this one had the least amount of ground disturbance, and it had really no impact on the town, because the town is just the, the residential backlot that we wouldn't be using this, this small corner. We ensure that the easement ran along the edge of the property as opposed to straight across on the corner. So we ran it along the corner, so there's no impact to future development should we need to do anything in, in the future.
Thank you. That was the only question I had for questions.
No, I'm glad, no, thanks.
You were coming next, anyway, because I had asked before. Uh, so thank you, appreciate that. Um, there are no other, uh, Mr. Bertheam?
No, so I was just gonna say, uh, through the chair, uh, to the town manager, you need us to, uh, make a motion, take, to vote?
Yes, uh, through the chair. So there's a motion right in the agenda from Attorney Henigan, our town council. Uh, and he just thought it would be appropriate to just say, first, uh, as you can see, uh, pursuant to Article 19, so can you see where that is?
So make a motion pursuant to Article 19 of the October 26th. I will make a motion pursuant to October, pursuant to Article 19 of the October 26, 2021 special town meeting. The Board of Selectmen, uh, should vote to execute the grant of easement presented by the town manager this eighth day of November 2021.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Uh, so four yeses and one abstention. Do you want us to sign that now, or?
Yeah, if you don't mind while you're all here, uh, if you can sign this.
Just one copy?
Yes, this will be the original, and then I will notify it.
We have none. I've already gone through all the town manager items. Table items, we have none. Select board member items, we have none. Uh, does anyone have anything that wanna add?